All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, April 11th, and I called the meeting of the Select Board to order at 6:20. Please join me in signing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We, announcements, this meeting is being recorded. The town is recording. If you're recording privately, please indicate. Just raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. Kelleher and Mr. Leefag, as usual. All right, that's it for announcements today. So let's move right on to the agenda. Agenda item number one, permanent highway superintendent candidate, Peter DeFlorio.
Okay, you want me to take point on this?
Please, Beth, you have led us on this.
So, so I took, as we discussed in the last meeting, we received, we interviewed Mr. DeFlorio. Y'all authorized me to go do a reference check into top potential terms with Mr. DeFlorio. So first of all, I checked all of his personal references, which included a select, a current, standing selectman from Rutland, one of his former water department employees, a contractor which he both worked in, has a personal relationship with, just like, you know, friends up, you know, relative to work, and then a police sergeant from Rutland PD, and then Mr. Kelleher, who's our current interim. The, the level of consistency of the references was really quite impressive, and all of it indicated really solid skills, working with residents, working with other departments, being knowledgeable about the water work, being ready and willing to mentor others in that, as well as being, you know, kind of first guy in the hole, was the term that his, his prior employee did. So, you know, he wasn't going to ask his people to do anything that he doesn't do. And that also just he's, he, outside of work, also does stuff for the community with like the local veterans organizations and such, so, somebody who understands like really supporting the community holistically, I would say. So, in talking with Mr. DeFlorio about terms, where we landed was at forty dollars per hour, which is a little bit higher than what we were planning on for the budget for next year, but given that he brings the water certifications to the table, I think it's a fair place to land, and it's only, I think, a thousand dollars more annually from a base salary perspective than what was the original ask from the Highway Department for this year. Because I think they were at seventy-nine, that would put, put him just about, just over eighty, from a base pay perspective.
I think getting another water certification in the House is certainly a valuable add for the town.
Right, absolutely.
Saves us money.
Yeah, it does, absolutely. So, so, and basically, and I, I had shared it prior, but I know that y'all are probably busy during the day too, and it was a last minute add. I basically drafted a very simple offer letter that indicates a start date of the 29th April, forty dollars an hour, the benefits per our standard bylaws and, and policies, and including, I did call out, just to be specific, that he would be taking a town, town cellphone, basically, for, for work use, and then also that we do have a standing vehicle policy that the Highway Super, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief all can take a town vehicle home back and forth, and that's true of the Water Superintendent as well, so where he'd be responding for, you know, similar to the other public service employees, I just wanted to call that out explicitly. And it indicates a three-year term, renewable, and then some boilerplate language, just because we are an at-will state, that it, that this is not a contract, that this is an offer of employment, but that it's, it's not necessarily, you know...
A three-year contract.
A three-year contract.
Right.
Right, so, so I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and authorize you to sign his offer letter.
Okay. I've got some questions. We can do that in discussion.
Well, second it, and we can discuss.
Yes, exactly. All right, so, okay, all right, for discussion, was a probationary period included in the discussion?
It wasn't, but I believe that our, our employee handbook has a ninety-day thing, but there's, I, we didn't discuss specifically approbation.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure the expectations are...
It's at-will, so, for or without pause?
I, I, I understand, but the, just want to make sure that we're, that it's a, that we're, that we're going to be getting to know each other very well over those last ninety days and how we work together.
Right.
The, the other question is, you mentioned forty dollars an hour, the, that implies hourly, is this going, and I believe in the past it's...
This position has always been policy. This has always been an hourly position. This has always been an hourly position.
Okay.
Herb Chafee was an hourly worker, Ryan was an hourly worker, and at one of the areas where they generally, one of the reasons why we can get a, a superintendent for that price is because they're eligible for overtime, though typically that overtime comes out of snow and ice, because typically they won't work over forty hours unless there's an emergency event.
Okay, that, I guess that's, that answers my question as to, is, because in general, I don't believe Highway has a significant overtime budget.
They don't.
And the...
And the Super's responsible for managing his own budget, so if he starts blowing through his budget, then, you know, we can start challenging him to actually make his budget.
Yeah, we can, we can do it that way. Okay, that's, okay, that's, that's a detail of how the Highway Department's operated that, that escaped me. I thought they did that more on a, on a salary basis and, and with, but with comp time, if they had to call out, but it sounds like it effectively works the same.
Yes.
And that's, in the end, that's the important thing, is how it works out.
Absolutely.
All right, and let's see. One thing I would, one expectation I would like, one additional expectation I'd like to set is during the, the first three months, if we could get bi-weekly reports or reports in cadence with our meetings, in just, I know that, that way, that will encourage more communication, help us understand what's going on, if there's anything of concern, that allows us to see it sooner. I, I feel that in the past, we haven't always been properly diligent about getting those, and it's led to us to not have this ability to...
So, Tom, I'm going to make a recommendation.
Yes, Beth.
Okay. Items like that don't go in an offer letter. Items like that go in the first week goals that you set for somebody, which is in the goals and expectations, and then what you do is you manage people to the goals and expectations that you set forth in writing as part of your onboarding as a supervisor.
Yes, and, okay, and I apologize, I was not envisioning this being in the offer letter. I envisioned this being in discussion around the offer letter as part of the, as part of, as part of the context of it.
Okay.
And so, it's like, and so, and it's like, and my thought is, I mean, I can, I mean, it could always work out that we, we make that, we make the offer letter, and then some of this discussion happens, and we uncover a deal breaker. My hope is that if we have a deal breaker, that comes up in discussion earlier rather than later, so we have a better chance of working through it, rather than bumping into it later, and that's, that's all.
Well, I mean, if reporting every other week prior to the Select Board meeting is a deal breaker, then we don't want the person working for us.
Exactly.
So...
But that's, but let's, my thought is, let's make sure that's not an issue before we, before we write the offer letter, rather than after.
So, Mr. DeFlorio's here, do you want to have him come up and just discuss this stuff about, about expectations upfront, or do you want to, how do you want to handle it? Because...
No, that's, that's all I had. Pete, have you heard anything that concerns you in, in what we're looking for?
I believe in transparency and great communication.
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, you're my bosses, so I need to keep in good communication with you and keep you updated on, now that it's part of our projects and progress in other areas. So, no communication is not allowed at all.
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all, I'm good.
Okay, one recommendation I do have is that, and given that we've been running shorthanded in the Highway Department, I think we have the budget to play with this way, I'd like to not necessarily terminate Gary's interim work, but lower his hours, right, and make him available for both a handoff of what's going on in the department, as well as, I'd like his input into a five-year plan for our roads, and that's something we don't have to like decide on a hundred percent tonight, but I'd like to see probably somewhere between like a four to six week overlap, definitely at a much lower hours level for Gary, you know, somewhere in the order of like four to eight hours a week, rather than what he's been working, to do a, a solid transition to help with putting together a five-year plan. Because one of the things I'd like, I was thinking within the first six months, but maybe we try to, maybe we try to tag at least a draft to the, to the first ninety days, is to, to get a, a, at least a draft of a plan together, initial, to, to, to drive kind of learning the town and, and getting a sense of the backlog.
Should we set maybe another meeting for that, or is that covered under this agenda item?
We probably...
Because I'm totally on board with that.
Well, it says permanent highway superintendent candidate discussion, I think, I think you're probably right, I think we probably need another agenda item about how to execute that, because we did put his name in the agenda item, but, but if we could put it on the next meeting, I'd like to see a little bit more overlap than we necessarily would typically have, to facilitate like a smooth transition, because times when we haven't had that type of overlap, it's turned out pretty crappy for the town.
Yeah, I, I can get behind that. Have you looked at the budget, just to confirm that there's enough money in there? I expect there is, I'm just asking...
I haven't looked specifically, but we've been running one person short for so long that I can't imagine that there's not some, some funding there.
I, okay, I, at this point, I don't have...
Do you want me to pull it up?
I do not need you to pull it up, I just thought, it's something we can look at afterwards, if there's a budget issue, we can bring it up later and reconsider.
Yeah, well, that may determine the, the scope of the hours available.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but I, I think, I think, I think an overlap period, it would make sense to, to ensure, to allow for a smooth handoff. So that would, that hand, that overlap period would start when Pete starts on the twenty-ninth, is what we're envisioning.
Yep.
Okay.
So...
And that's, and my thought is, is that, when we, it's like, we can, we can talk to them, and when we feel that the, that the handoff is done, we can then end that period.
Right, and I think that's part of the, the, every two-week reporting, is like how, you know, what progress they've made towards the five-year plan, and just make that a standing point of the, the comms.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What's, what's been reviewed, what, what the current considerations are, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and then you, you were envisioning four to six weeks, is, am I remembering that right, or like, like, or target?
I think, I think, I think it's one of those things where we, we need to see where we're at, both budget-wise and planning-wise, right? So, I think it depends.
I guess I would say practically, it can't go more than ten weeks, because that gets us to the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
So...
So it's somewhere between four and ten weeks, so there you go.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
That's what I've got, so, and my thought was, you know, I made the motion, you could sign the offer letter, since we have him here, he could make a decision and, and sign or not sign, and that's kind of where we're at.
All right, and then we can make a point of scheduling something ninety days from now to, as, for, for...
Do an initial review.
You know what, I would suggest that we schedule forty-five days from now, halfway through the probationary period, and just as sort of a, how we do it. If there are any concerns, if, we're not bringing them up at the end of probationary period, we're doing it during it. I mean, I, I mean, Brad, I expect you're going to continue to visit the Department, and so, nothing's, hopefully, nothing will surprise us at that time, but I think we have a little checkpoint where the whole board gets a chance to hear the update.
Sure.
Excellent. I, I am done with the discussion. And you two are also. All in, all in favor of extending a, the, uh, 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 writing, me signing the offer letter as described to Peter DeFlorio as our new permanent highway superintendent? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let me sign that. Today's the eleventh, I said that.
Actually, try to keep the minutes real time, and then we'll just say...
Are you keeping the minutes?
Pete, you have mail.
I spaced on it.
Yeah, I must. Well, I'm technically the clerk, so, never did finish the report until you...
Get my eyeballs on you.
No, I haven't even talked to her.
Okay, I'll finish it then.
And we can notify the, our interim treasurer that there's a, an onboarding to be, to be done.
Indeed.
Thank you, sir.
And, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so excited.
Welcome.
This is going to be a great thing.
It is.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. See you in the show soon.
We will.
All right. Enjoy your weekend.
Awesome, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
All right, I guess there's nothing else to do on agenda item number one. Agenda item number two, open meeting law complaint against the Select Board. All right, and so... Yeah, I can't type to save my life. I forgot to bring my hard copy. But, to summarize, the, the complaint was a...
Can I bring it up?
Twofold. I want, I want my own copy. It's just, it's work, it's my work laptop, and so I just cannot extend the timeout of the, there we go, all right, so, uh, let's see. The complaint was twofold, one was that the agenda was not specific enough, though I will note that there is no, there is, it is, it is a very vague complaint, that the agenda was not specific enough, there is no specific agenda item called out, and there is no suggestion that based on, I did not say anything, there is no feedback, as in based on the discussion, this would have been a sufficient level of detail. Mr. Holdcraft has the complaint, it is here, and so we can ask him to clarify that, I would ask him, does that make, should we, should we have him up to clarify that?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Holdcraft, would you care to join us, please? So, so, sir, on the, on the first element of your complaint regarding the agenda, what was the, can you be, can you give us a little more specificity as to which agenda item you felt was, was insufficiently clear, and what you think would be an appropriate, an appropriate level of detail?
Mr. Vayner, is the point being recorded?
Mr. K, Mr. Kelleher, I, um, no.
Simple question.
No, not, not at the moment, I, it's like, I, he, there, a, an open meeting complaint has been filed against this board by Mr. Holdcraft, and I, I don't see why, and the, I feel, I am, I feel I am not clearly understanding the nature of the complaint, as it just says, as the complaint is vague, saying that the agenda is vague, without any specific mention of which agenda item it was, and, and why the, why the language in the agenda was vague. And so, I see no reason why, to interrupt this meeting, to, for your question, just when I'd asked Mr. Holdcraft to clarify, so, Mr. Holdcraft, could you, back to the question, which agenda, which agenda item do you feel was, was insufficiently clear?
Well, in general, a lot of the agenda items you have on are not very clear, but the one in particular that I was talking about was the host agreement. Most people in this community don't know what, what's going on with this host agreement is, and it was very vague on your agenda.
Okay.
And I think that should have been, you know, it was a pretty big discussion, and I think it should have been a little more broad of what that meant, you know, so when someone reads the agenda, they can say, you know, have some kind of an idea of what that meant.
Okay, that's a, that's not, I, I, that's not a bad point, as, as someone who's been in the middle of this, I, HCA is very familiar to me, and that I can certainly take that as a, I can certainly take that as, and make the effort to, to think, to, to think about the agenda items from the point of view of someone outside of town government with, with a little less, and so, it's like, and so, it's like, so, I...
That's my point.
And, and so, and so, I don't know that it, and so, without stip, without stipulating that, without, without agreeing that your complaint is valid, I will say that I can definitely make more of an effort to make it even more clear to everyone in town.
Okay.
All right.
And I don't want you to agree with me, because that would look good for you, Tom.
Well, I could agree with you, but then we'd both be wrong.
I don't know about that. I don't think that flies.
Don't lead with your chin, Dave.
It's all, it's all good.
So, the other, so, and then the other aspect of your complaint was, and I just have to call it up, is that, oh, and there we go, not, I apologize, I read, I'm reading second paragraph, and was clearly not enough, so, you were a little more specific, I just need, I needed to read further along, and then, so, your other complaint was that we adjourned the meeting at eight-twenty, then remained as a quorum to discuss and signed documents, including what appeared to be a contract. Members of the audience, discussion was held with them, and went on for several minutes. Yes, we did sign a contract after the meeting adjourned. I have reviewed the recording of the meeting, and, and I will ask the other members of the Select Board to, to chime in if they have a different recollection, is that at fifty-seven minutes into the recording, on YouTube, posted to YouTube, to the Brookfield Community Media Channel, in that one or two-minute period afterwards, the Board voted affirmatively, unanimously, to sign the contract. Signature of the contract does not need to occur in open meeting. My recollection of the meeting, and again, I'll rely on the other Board members, is that the contract was ready for signature after the meeting, and therefore, the Board executed the will that it agreed to an open meeting to sign the contract, but the signatures occurred afterwards. My recollection, Beth, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, and any opinions expressed there too, at that point, are moot, because the decision had already been made.
Yes, and my recollection was that it was, we discussed about the contract, I think some of the discussion might have been in, about the language in the contract we had agreed to, but no discussion of changing the contract was done, and other than that, I think it was chit-chat. Do I, what do you, what do you two remember from that time?
That would be my opinion.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
I haven't reviewed the tape, but, and honestly, the way my life is, I don't know that I recall exactly, but I do know for a fact that the only things that we were talking about were things that we had already talked about, so I don't know that we can consider that a violation of open meeting, because there was no changes in determination, or, or...
It was, it was, it was discussion, it was recounting of, it was factual recounting of previous discussions, and, and around the physical signing of a contract that the Board had agreed to.
Yeah.
So, that's, and that's my recollection also, and so, and, and I, but I understand that the, the appearance of a violation of open meeting law is, is of concern, but do you, do you agree that the signing of a contract, that the Board has, that, that if a Board votes to sign a contract in open meeting, that the signature can take place at any time, at the Board's convenience?
No, I don't agree with that at all.
Really?
Really, because why would you do it after, you had people up here from the community, you don't know what you're doing or not doing, you say you didn't make any changes, but why would you do it after the meeting's convened, and everybody, everybody is, the cameras are all off, except for a couple? How do we know, how do we know, just on an open scope of things, how do we know you're not, you're doing, why would you sign it after? You know, that raises the question, but what are they doing? Is it making some changes here? The average person out in the public would say, hey, why didn't they sign it during the meeting?
Well, well, just because people like walk up and steal paperwork off of our desk during meetings, you know, it, maybe it's, it's, that's why you don't trust the fact that we're just executing what we stated we were going to do during the meeting.
Stealing papers, what are you talking about?
I believe, I, I, I believe that the contract that was, the contract proposal that was discussed is a public document, it should be in the meeting minutes.
Yep.
The signed contract's a public document.
Right.
And I believe that someone should, that...
Fair question.
That, 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 that someone could look at the proposed contract, follow on, say, oh, yeah, this is what they're talking about, this is what they're talking about, this is what they're talking about, and then look at the final signed contract and say, yep, here's the change I made, here's the change I made, here's the change they made. And so therefore, signing, and my understanding is that it is standard practice for signatures to be done, my, and I would say that if we, because we had originally talked about signing it the following Tuesday to accommodate that schedule.
Right.
And then as a, in order to provide, I would say, better service to the residents of the town, we found a way to sign the contract more immediately, because the signed contract is what he needed to move forward with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right.
And so, rather than holding him up because the, the contract wasn't going to be ready at, at a cer, until Tuesday, we found a way to make the signable contract ready at the, at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
And based on my understanding of practice, the signature is the...
Oh, and it's a certification vote.
Is the result of the Board expressing its will, and the Board had expressed its will and its decision in open meeting, in conformance with law, and the signature's a formality that doesn't need, doesn't need to be done. Now, the signature needs to be in a contract that reflects the Board's will, and I think the record will support that.
Yeah.
And, but, Mr. Holdcraft, if you, if you feel that the sig, the signing of a document, even the final signing, it's like, is, is outside of open meeting, is illegal, I ask you to take that, then we can take that to the Attorney General.
You can do that, but that's not the point here, the point is, you guys had a quorum, you adjourned a meeting, the public meeting was over, and then you still conducted business after that fact.
Um, that...
The public meeting's over, that's it.
Um...
So, you actually, you, so you can say all this stuff, well, signing, changing this, that, you can stand there for five, sit there for five minutes and explain all this. Fact is, it's a public meeting, it's adjourned, and the three of you were still, then you went back and started doing town business. Ah, you can't do it.
We're not doing town business, we were executing.
Town business, signing, signing, our host agreement with the town is town business, Beth.
So we were executing what we had already voted on.
Yeah, why didn't you do it during the meeting?
Typically, typically, honestly, a lot of times, if we don't have the document right there, ready, when, when we vote it, okay?
But you did it this time.
We'll leave it in the office, and people will walk by and, and do it, so it's no different than us signing outside of the meeting after a vote, there's...
But you had the document ready that night, you could have signed it during the meeting, you didn't do that.
Because, you know, I don't, I don't, sorry, that...
I would suggest taking it up with the Attorney General.
Yeah.
And my, my, my thought is, is that the, the sign, signing the document outside of the meeting is not a problem.
No.
And that open meeting law does not prevent us from talking as a group outside of open meeting. It forbids us from discussing town...
Debating.
From discussing and debating town business. My recol, and so therefore, when we are together, like, and here was just the example, I was chat, before the meeting, I was chatting with Pete about something, about business that could, about something in the warrant book. Brad walked in, and what was the first thing I said, Brad, as you walked up, as I walked up?
Well, yeah, you stopped.
Generally, it's like, I said, I have to stop talking about this, because Brad's now here, and we have a quorum. So this is something that I tried to be aware of, and I feel that, I, I believe that had I felt I was talking about town business and discussing something, I would not have done it, but it is a, it is your, Mr. Holdcraft, we have explained our recollection, we have explained what we feel happened, and we have explained why we feel that the behavior of the members of the Board after the meeting was adjourned is not a violation of open meeting law. Now, so...
You just contradicted yourself with what you said about Brad, the three of you here, after the public meeting's over, and you said you couldn't even talk to Brad out in the hallway, but after the meeting, the public meeting is over.
No, 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 wait, 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 let me, no, you, we will, you can go back to tape, and I will say almost the exact same thing. I said, I was talk... Excuse me, I am talking, Mr. Holdcraft.
Yeah, go ahead.
I am talking, no, I am talking, and you're not...
Continue.
No, no, no.
Continue talking. Don't yell at me, don't raise your voice to me, okay?
Well, then, then don't interrupt me. Ch-ch-ch-ch.
I said, continue.
Zip.
Continue talking. You may continue.
You may zip it, there we go, now.
Now you can continue.
As I was saying, you see, I try and talk, and you just keep talking, you keep talking, you're like my ten-year-old daughter, has to get in the last word. It's, it's so much fun.
Your wife gets the last word in, yes, sir. That's what you, alright, so go ahead, continue on.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
You would, you would, you would think that. I'm done. I have explained my position, he is not willing to listen, I see, if you would like to hear my position again, we can arrange a video.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Oldcraft.
You're welcome.
And so, the board, um, I have not reviewed my position on, uh, excuse me, not position. I have, I have, uh, I have looked over the format for responding to this, the requirements, but I don't recall them. Has anyone, has, does anyone have a fresh recollection of the process for responding to an open?
Not fresh, I'd have to look it back up.
My, my under, my recollection is, um, let's see.
Well, it says right on there, doesn't it?
On the form?
I believe, it, it may.
Hold my heart.
Okay, well, yeah, hold on, Blair. I mean, I think we are, I, my belief is, the general form is that we need to respond to the complainant, and then if the complainant is unsatisfied, they may then bring it to the Attorney General.
Correct.
Okay. So, I wanna make sure that, and so, and now is, does our response have to be in writing, or can it be verbal?
It's gotta be writing, sure.
I would, I would put it in writing.
Alright, then, um, then what I would like is, um, then what I will do is, I will, um, I will put an agenda, I will, then let's review a written response next Thursday.
Point of order.
Yeah, formal, it, it's.
I like to read as point of order.
There's, this, this, Mr. Keller, you, you, you failed to understand what a point of order is. A point of order is not, I want you to listen to me, a point of order is you are running the meeting wrong.
You're making a procedural mistake is what a point of order is, sir.
Uh, uh, in the meeting, I'm making a procedural mistake. If I'm making a procedural mistake in responding to an open meeting law complaint, that is not a point of order in this meeting. That is a point of, that is a point of information or something, or, or of some such. So, so.
I mean, you have phrased it point wrong, but you, I think there's, there's, there's a procedure to ensure that you got it.
Okay, uh, yeah, okay, if we're, if, uh, we, the, the board will refresh, the board will refresh itself on, on the proper procedure. So.
Okay, so wait a second, let's, let's, let's take a look here. So, we can go slow to go fast. So, a complaint is ripe for review by the Attorney General thirty days after the complaint is filed with the public body. So, uh, a complainant who has filed a complaint with a public body and seeks further review must file a complaint with the Attorney General after thirty-day local review period has elapsed, but before ninety days has passed since the date of violation and the date that the violation was reasonably discoverable. So, let's see here. Okay, so. So, basically, we need to respond. Okay, so upon receipt, the Chair of the Public Body should distribute copies of the complaint to members of the Public Body for their review. The Public Body has fourteen days from the date of receipt to review the complainant's allegations, take remedial action if appropriate, notify the complainant of remedial action, and forward a copy of the complaint and the description of the remedial action taken to the Attorney General. Okay? While the Public Body may delegate responsibility for responding to the complaint to counsel or other individual, it must first meet to do so. Okay? The Public Body may request additional information from the complainant. Public Body may also request an extension of time to respond to the complaint. A request for extension should be made within fourteen days of the receipt of the open meeting law, receipt of the open meeting law, um, receipt of the complaint, and then, uh, using, um, and that's per the Open Meeting Law Guide, page eighteen, version three, eighteen fifteen, whatever, complaint by the public body, receipt of the complaint by the public body. A request for extension should be made in writing to the Division of Open Government and should include a copy of the complaint and state the reason for requesting. Fundamentally, we, what we have, right, it's fourteen days from the date of the receipt, so when did we receive the complaint?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday?
A week ago, uh, the fourth, April fourth.
April fourth, okay. So, we have fourteen days to review the complainant's allegations, take remedial action if appropriate, and notify the complainant of the remedial action, and forward a copy of the complaint and the description of the remedial action taken to the Attorney General. Okay? So, it does not specify that the, that the notification of remedial action needs to be in writing, or whether it needs to be verbal, right, it can be, it sounds like it can be either, and it's not necessarily stated specifically. But obviously, any communication to the Attorney General, which would be a copy of the complaint and the description of the remedial action, is what we forward to the Attorney General.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it sounds like, and I don't know that we voted it, and I don't know that we need to vote it, but, um, it sounds like, based, there are two portions to the complaint. The first is that, a statement that the, that the, uh, agenda item was unclear, which, I mean frankly, anybody that's been tracking any of the local businesses seen, HCA and Sun Fusions on enough documents, that I think that that's kind of a frivolous complaint personally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think we've just, and we've also established that if there was, there was no determination or modifications made other than that, what was discussed in open meeting. So, the mechanics of signing it after the meeting, again, is an unfounded complaint.
I agree, the, uh, this, this, the signature outside of open meeting, the signature does not need to happen in open meeting.
Yeah. So, um, not when we expressly voted to sign it. So, um. Notify the complainant of the remedial action. So, at this time, I think, as I followed the discussion, the only remedial action that I noted in, for inclusion in the minutes was that you agreed to try and look at items in the future from an outside perspective when building the agendas.
Yeah, that, that, I agree.
That, that it's easy when we're, when we're the ones seeing agenda after agenda after agenda to assume that folks that are actually following local municipal activity would know exactly what HCA relative to Sun Fusions was about, considering how much awareness, I would say, the community has had around marijuana in this town, going back now two years and fights during, you know, annual town meeting and the like. Right? And it's all been the same people. So, I mean, it sounds like we just need to draft a response, or authorize one of us to draft a response, send it to our council, because we can delegate. So, I would kinda like to make a motion that we delegate to KP Law to draft our response, based on the content of this discussion.
Sounds good.
Was it up a second?
Yeah, that was a second. Here's the motion, that is a second.
Alright, um, all, all in favor of, of delegating the, uh, these, the drafting of the response to KP Law, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I, I will speak to Michelle and share with her the details, and make sure she has what she needs to res- uh, provide our response to the Attorney General.
Okay, great. So, and I'll, I'll indicate what I said, and what I was gonna indicate in the minutes, and I'll do draft minutes fast, I'm trying to do them sort of real time.
Okay.
So that you'll have a copy of the minutes to, at least draft minutes to provide to KP.
Mm, thank you.
So.
I was gonna, I was also going to ask Jacob for a, an advanced copy of the, uh, recording in case any, anything needed.
Yeah, that would be good. You could, you could always send them, send her the video and, and they can, and give her the time hacks around the discussion.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else? I think, I think we've charted a path forward there. Alright, so, agenda item number three, after-hours access. And it's occurring to me, as part of this work, uh, let's see, and wait, let me make sure, town hall after hours, building access, employees needing access. This is about employees, so.
Well, I'm not getting in, cause I don't have a key, so.
But you, you should be on the list, whether you, whether you have the key to get in or not, you should have access. This is a much longer list than I expected.
I think it's shorter than the one I originally had seen.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it was two columns, it's, it's.
No, you were.
It's role, name, role, okay, there we go. Board of Health. Homeland Security?
What's that?
There, there, there's a, there's a Keith Carmen.
He's in the fire department. He's probably a de facto.
I just didn't realize that would be a specific role.
Right.
Pe- Peter?
That term doesn't exist here, it's a deputy emergency management director.
Okay. Uh, uh, yeah, I would, I would think that someone, that anyone would be through the, either the fire department or the, uh, Brookfield Emergency Management Area, or Agency, excuse me. Alright, so, let's see. So, Peter, um, Keith Carmen doesn't need a after-hours access to the building, or a key, or individual?
No, he, he'd have access to the fire department, I show them, but no, individually, no.
Alright, thank you. Um, why would the library need access to this building?
Um, library trust, library, I don't know. Uh, you know, it's because we used to have a bunch of stuff upstairs that they were going through.
Oh, and, but now that they have the eighteen Con Street.
We had, we had a bunch of records, and we had a bunch of documents, and they were going through, like, all kinds of stuff to see whether it should go in the archives or not.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we can ask her if she still really needs it, but that's, that's what I recall of, of why they have the access.
And then, other than that, mm. I mean, I know, I know advisory committee has had access because they meet here, um, recreation, do they meet here? Do we, do we generally give it to a committee so they can access the building for meetings? Beth?
I'm sorry?
Um, I noticed that the recreation committee is on the building access list.
Yeah, every Chair.
Yeah, every committee Chair.
Of every committee.
Okay.
Has a key in order to allow them to hold meetings.
Okay, that's, that's what I suspected, cause I'm going, they don't, I didn't think they kept anything here. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if they needed to get to their mailbox too.
After-hours, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, otherwise they could only, a lot of people could only pick up their mail on Wednesdays.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, after work.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, alright. And then the AA group.
They are still in existence, I believe.
No, no, I, I know they're still in existence, but they are, they, they are a community group rather than, and everything else on this list is, is, is an entity under town government, in one form or another, either directly in the select board's control or on a co-equal board, except for X, and, except for the AA group.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm not opposed to supporting them, it's just, it just sort of caught my eye.
I think that's been a longstanding thing at the time.
And, and part of that falls under our, I know we, we had our discussion around, um, community access and after-hours access, and whether it would be, like, whether their access would be sponsored by someone who has a building key and be responsible, or whether we would need to have someone let them in. Or whether we would just let them have their own access. I'm not, I'm not looking to change that right now.
Their historic, their historic performance has been they leave the place cleaner than it is when they show up, so.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to change that, I'm just, boy, just noticing things as I go. Alright. Alright, so what I would say is that, and I, let's see, edit as see fit. So, I would say that we, um, that we send it, ask Karen to distribute this to all the boards, committees, and town employees, and ask them to say yes, yea, or nay. Um, hold on, treasure.
What do you mean?
Uh, as to say, whether they say, to allow people to say, no, I need access, I need this person to have access, or to say, I don't need access.
How did we get this list in the first place?
I, I think Karen put it together.
Did she consult them?
I don't. If she were here, I could ask her, but she had the day off. Alright, so let me, let me put it this way. And if Karen says she's already consulted them, then that just shortcuts that discussion.
Well, I mean.
We would just, we would just come back with our edits and say, does the library need it?
Base that we can let it go, and if we need to add people, we need to add people.
Yeah, I, I don't think it has to be perfect before we institute it, I think it just needs to be good enough that, you know, we're not getting, that they're not taking advantage of the fact that I just have to jump over the fence and come open it for them.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Cause these are gonna be individual PIN codes.
Yeah.
Right. And someone's gonna learn how to do it, if we need to add people.
Yeah. We'll need to figure that out, but we can do that. And if it takes a couple of days for someone to get their code entered, it takes a couple of days. But ideally, we'll see that coming, and we can get that entered before they need it. Alright. So, I will, I will, I will reach out to Brenda and ask her if the, uh, library needs that. Cause, and actually, what, a lot of what was in there probably was, more fell under historical commission than library, those old records.
I don't know.
I know they, I know they were, I know library and historical work together on that.
Yeah.
But, it's just, my, my thought is, if someone doesn't need it, then it's just better, if they don't need access, then it's better not to grant them access.
Yeah, the historical commission, I believe, had stuff on the third floor, and then it moved over to the annex when that was.
Yeah, but I would say the historical commission, since they're technically a committee, then under policy, they should, they should, they should have access. And then. I was gonna say, yeah, and then police and fire have access. The only offsite group that, the only offsite office that doesn't have access is highway, I think. I don't think, I don't know if it's needed. You know what? If they needed it, they would've said something by now. So, I, we can, if they need it, we can add them to the list sometime in the future. Alright, I think we're good on the list. I'll ask Brenda, and if she doesn't need it, then we'll arrange to, uh, for her to not get a code and for her to return any key she has. And if she, and if she needs it, then, then we'll give it to her.
Why would we not give it to the town collector?
The town collector?
Oh, oh, you mean Bren- okay, you meant Brenda Medebo.
Yes, yes, nah, yeah, sorry.
Never mind. Wrong Brenda.
Alright. Anything else on that one?
Nope.
Alright. Uh, Board of Health, inter-municipal agreement. Is this, do we sign this every year, or is it a three-year?
That's every year.
Alright.
And if we don't sign it, it screws up the whole mix of towns involved.
Well, I think that also means we don't get access to, uh, to services and assistance that we rely on.
Right.
So, I don't, uh, I don't see it. And then, did anyone confirm that this is unchanged from past years, other than dates?
What's that?
The, in the, uh, inter-municipal agreement for the, uh, health services.
Oh, the one with, uh, you know, I don't know. I don't have a copy of last year's.
Mm-hmm. Um, does this need to be?
I do know it was strongly advised originally by Board of Health for us to go ahead and adopt it.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Keller, as, as a member of the Board of Health, are you a- Mr. Keller, as, as a member of the Board of Health, are you awa- can you confirm that, whether this agreement is, uh, what, what changes there are in the contract before us against the, um, the contract we signed last year?
Unfortunately, I was not on Board of Health last year, so I don't know this question, sorry.
Okay, I, I thought, okay, no worries, thank you for, uh, thank you for the response.
Not when they adopted it, this was adopted right before.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Didn't Maureen send something?
I don't know, did she?
Yeah. Touch of the final draft. Stagnus, uh, or is this the? On Monday.
Yeah. Is this something we could sign next week after just verifying that there's, nothing's been changed?
Or we can agree to sign it, and then pending clarity, and then we can come in and sign it.
Yeah, pending confirmation, yeah, and that way, and if there is a change, then that authorization to sign is voided because of the change, and we can reconsider it next time, I like that approach, because then we're not, then we don't have to reconsider it if it's unchanged from last year.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize, um, the Chair to sign the intermunicipal, uh, Board of Health agreement, uh, pending verification from the Board of Health that the terms are substantively unchanged or ex- and/or acceptable to the Board of Health.
Second.
Alright, all, all in favor of Beth's motion, please say aye, alright, aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. That way we can hopefully get that done next, uh, early next week. Alright, uh, number five, Board of Health, warrant article request. Um, we have received a request from the, uh, Board of Health. Mr. Keller, I didn't get a, is, is that for a fiscal year twenty-three bill?
So basically, yes, Maureen came across a bill that was, um, where she came across it, it was too late to paint.
Okay.
So, I think it's like seven hundred dollars and something.
Yep, that sounds about right, I can, I can call it up, uh, thank you for confirming, yes, the, uh, request is for the, uh, to put on the warrant, a, uh, an article to, uh, pay a prior fiscal year bill that the Board of Health has. Mm-hmm. And.
So.
Go ahead, Beth.
Um, I'm sorry, can we revisit, I, I'd like to make a motion to revisit our prior, um, our prior, uh, topic.
Um, the intermunicipal agreement?
Yep.
Alright, Brad, second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of revisiting agenda item number four, please say aye.
Aye. So, it's pretty clear, actually, from Maureen's, uh, note that, I mean, this is the boilerplate, this is the agreement as it stands, I think we just need to go ahead and.
Right, that's what I understood it to be.
Okay, then, then that's fine, it, it, then I think we've made our determination.
Yeah.
And that means that, then I will, I will sign it before we leave and, uh, leave the signed document for Karen.
Alright, so I make a motion that we just go ahead and.
Good, sign it, second.
Alright. Um, all in favor of signing immediately, uh, based on Beth's finding, please say aye.
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 Alright. It's gonna take me a minute to fill, fill out all this detail, so the, um.
You don't have to, you're authorized, unless they need our signatures, you're authorized to sign, you fill it in after.
Contact name, email, phone, address.
Well, we've already established you can sign it after.
Oh, that's true. Alright, then, then I, I will sign, I will sign effectively immediately. Alright, let's get that. Thank you, we're, we're, we're almost an hour in. And we're almost done, alright, so.
Alright, so last thing we have is the annual election warrant.
Uh, hold on, the, uh, just to confirm the amount, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. So I'll take a motion to, uh, include, um, this requested article in the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of adding the, uh, the Board of Health's, um, article for, uh, as requested, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, thank you. I will, I will ask Karen to add that, and the election year warrant, sixth and last. I'm sorry, I believe the, we had a seventh item posted agenda, but I've, I've been told we need to pass that over, so.
Okay.
So agenda item number six.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we sign the annual election warrant.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of signing the election warrant, please say aye.
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 Aye, alright, and we all, three copies, we all sign each. And let's see, the last item on the agenda was the list of special municipal employees, I'm told it needs to be updated, and therefore, we are passing it over. So I will take a motion to pass that over.
Motion to pass over the list of special municipal employees discussion.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of passing over that agenda item, please say aye.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
All in favor of, I'm saying, thank you for the second, all in favor of adjourning this meeting at seven fifteen, and then finish signing after the meeting is adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.